Mr. Scott, roll call please.
This is President. Ms. Albright.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Jay Murray. Mrs. Strobel.
Here.
Mr. B. Scott, here. Ms. Leoni.
Here.
Ms...Ms. S. Tepman?
No.
No. Off?
Yes.
And our President, Solis.
Here. Okay, our procedures for public participation are listed on the agenda that's at the back of the room. If you're here, please sign in. If you come up to speak, please sign in on the podium. And take a look at our fancy new microphone placement that you should be able to be heard now because it's actually closer to your mouth. I do have some housekeeping before we start. It's our new space. You know, I appreciate in advance your understanding if there's any issues with the timing of when meetings are supposed to start and if we don't get the temperature right in the room, whatever's going on. You can always talk to me if you think that there's something I need to know, but you know, just be gentle with us while we're still getting used to our new space. Bathrooms down, take an immediate right and immediate left and bathrooms are right there. And that was my housekeeping things that I wanted to say. So announcements, do we have some agenda edits? Okay. There will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel. And to start off, we do have a presentation by the Office of Academic Affairs, our executive summary presentation.
Good evening. I'm going to present to you the data from last school year for the Academic Affairs Office. I will present a piece on the overview of where we are collectively as a district with an executive summary, some pieces that we're putting in place. And then the principals have a report card in consultation, partnership with leadership and teachers in their building because we feel ultimately that the state test scores are a fragment of what is important, but it's not the sum total of what we do in these buildings or what we do for the community education. So the principals will speak to those issues. Scott, will this work from like way over here like this?
We're gonna find out.
Oh, look at that, okay. Alright, so the executive summary, you know, very briefly is to take a quick look, kind of the macro view, which I said, the macro view, which is where we stand as a district comprehensively. And then we'll get into the micro view, building by building. Under the MTSS model, which we evolved at the high school this year, it's in play. It obviously needs a little opportunity to grow. There will always be opportunities to revise and grow. And then we're going, the reason we're going to go to the middle school next year, we've decided to move forward K to 12 in that model. So to bring that together, Tier One, you'll see growth opportunities. I know each of you have this report. It was sent to you, I hope, last Friday. You had the opportunity over the weekend. And feel free at any time to engage with a question. We saw many growth opportunities and the expected outcome. I will not walk you through one-on-one as you look at them and you can certainly take a peek. We will also publish this on the Academic Affairs site for community after tonight or after the voting meeting. Some of the areas we know and we've talked about for a very long time is that the Tier One instruction, Tier One curriculum model was a little disjointed. So we're spending a good deal of time mapping out that curriculum. Again, that will come online. Everything is proceeding just as we had hoped. The teachers have been dedicated, worked hard in our four core areas, which is science, social studies, math, everything else that we want. Those pieces are mapping and will come online, I suspect, by July 1st. So we'll be doing it by the community. We want to have global transparency for the community for all the staff, K to 12. Tier Two intervention pieces, if you will, be if our instruction and curriculum does not work for the Tier One group or not for all students, let's say, for whatever reason, they just not meeting the standard, not performing to the level that we had hoped, there are interventions that will be taking place. Right now, we're missing Tier Two interventions as a collective model. Doesn't mean that there aren't Tier Two interventions happening in pockets, they are, but how do we systematize our operation and what we're trying to do? We want to have a system so that we know and we can pinpoint exactly where things are breaking down. Right now, it could be the curriculum, it could be the instruction, it could be the student. We really just don't know. And I feel like collectively our team has discussed it and we're very quick as educators to point, there's something wrong with that student. We know there's something wrong. We really don't know if there's something wrong. What we know is that the student's not getting results. We don't know why. We don't know if it's the curriculum and we don't know if it's the instruction. And when we look at, you know, talk to Mrs. McCaslin, we look at our special education identification rate at 19 percent, that is outlier from where we think it should be. We feel like it should be, and Mrs. McCaslin can weigh in, but around 10 percent, 11 percent would be about right. So there's something that's not working for students on the academic and behavioral side, but we're not quite sure. And this is what we're hoping, I believe, in revenue. So we'll see those periodic interventions in Tier Two. And then Tier Three will be programmatic interventions. Students will go through all those experiences. At that point, if we've applied all those interventions and those intervention programs after we've done the universal, you know, instruction and curriculum, then we feel that we're on solid ground to make a recommendation that these students should be evaluated and perhaps our students would best be served in the special education model. So that's kind of where we are globally. Here's some of the data behind where we stand. That's the table of contents I'm sure you've seen. This aligns with all the pieces that we've laid out to district and mission and vision. We want to be a high performing school. We're using data to drive those decisions. We look at the state assessments for Keystone, for PSSA. We look at kind of where we're establishing ourselves, three day and grades four, eight for science. You're familiar with the advanced proficient, basic, low basic rating, although the state essentially just asked that you be proficient. And that will be a passing score if you want to use that terminology. So here's where we are as a state, I mean as a school district in the state. We're up 41 slots. We're ranked 243rd out of 605 districts up in the state. We're about at the edge of the top third, roughly. Certainly, we feel we can be better. We feel the way to get better is to have as many of our team stakeholders in this process to make decisions and drive. The, if you can kind of look at the district statewide performance, you can see where we're in 2012. It's kind of flatlined. We're kind of want to slide up right now, but we're pretty consistently where we've been. You can see building by building. Currently, the green obviously indicates that these are against the flat standard, okay, not against growth. Right now, we're looking at just making the standard. So the state, the high schools at about 71, intermediate at 49, middle school at about 70. We have more males than females. That's not good when it comes to prom in a couple of years, but yes, sir.
Eighty-one percent of the middle schools.
Where are you at? Sorry?
Eighty-one percent of the red.
Okay, they dropped 81 slots against the number of middle schools in the state.
One twenty-nine is obviously.
Correct.
I can see that's the eighty-one.
Correct, that's correct.
That's what they showed.
Yep. So back to my, you know, Mrs. Strobel stepped on my humor a little bit. I had a prom joke right there. Economically disadvantaged district-wide, we're at 26 percent. You know, our students are economically disadvantaged. Nineteen percent talked about special education. Very tiny piece are homeless. And then you break out in ethnicity. You can kind of have a sense of kind of where our ethnicity and race align. If you want to go to the future-ready index on this document, you can click right on there. You can drive deeper into data. So what we're looking at here for the high school are just straight scores. Did they meet the standard? So we were green in that area, not blue. We could be blue. I mean, that's what we want to be blue in all those areas. That would mean we'd have to cross into the mid-seventies to eighty percent in those areas. We are not there. You can see from here, I think that's 78 percent of our students pass, if you want to use that term, ELA. Mathematically, we're at 72 percent. And in biology, we're at 72 percent. Our students are successful. Middle school, we'll see the numbers at, I think, 67 percent. We have a concern in our straight math score. Jenny and her team are aware of that. We're putting things in play to address that. And then in terms of biology and where science, we're at around 56 percent there. In the intermediate center, we are around 60 percent on the ELA. We're at 48, I think, 48, 40 percent in math, for our wayals. And then 72 percent on the science thing. And the primary center doesn't get a score from the state that way. They have no one's being assessed on PSSAs, so we won't have a real score to report out there. But when Melanie comes up to talk about the report card, she's going to show you all the tools and data pieces we're using to kind of get a sense of where that the students stand coming into third grade. Now, we go to PBOSS. This is an area, PBOSS is showing how our students are growing, okay? So for example, if they have Mrs. Olson for a year, we would like to think that her teaching would deliver a year's worth of growth. So regardless if you get them and they weren't able to pass, the state assessment would be proficient, so to speak, but they still grew in one year. For their instruction that they received from you, that will be reflected here. So you'll see in grades four and five, Ami has, they're blue in 19. I like to look at the three-year number because we can, we change teachers a lot. What they're teaching, what grades they're teaching, it kind of moves around with all the transition we've had over the last few years. So when you see the three-year average, you get a sense of teachers who have three years' worth of data. Middle school, you can see some very nice blue areas here in sixth grade. You can see some blue areas also down, our green areas over here. We're looking at all math information right now. ELA, you'll see, you know, Ami has some red in fourth, but some blue in fifth. The middle school has some red in sixth, some blue in seventh and eighth, a little bit of green. Science, we have identified that it is disjointed. We know that we are not teaching right now and aligning, this goes back to our point about the instructional teaching to what the standards are and knowing what the standards are. Our science has been misaligned, being remedied and addressed in that Tier One work that we're doing now. Middle school, better alignment in those areas. High school, we look at algebra, very red. Biology, very red, lit, yellow and a little red. You'll see green down here for the algebra test. The reason that they're different, they are green and red. Our best and brightest students are taking algebra at Keystone in middle school, okay? At the high school, we are not, and we're already basically creamed off the top of that algebra score. However, we should be able to still grow kids. So we're dealing with issues of failure to grow. So if you picked up on the information from earlier, we're seeing that we're meeting the target score against Keystone, but we're not growing kids as well in the high school. In the middle school, we did not meet the target score in one of the areas, but they're growing students. So I wish it were just nice and plain and easy saying, we're not doing this or we aren't doing that. It's a little more complicated in many of the areas. Three-year teacher composites of PBOSS. This kind of goes back to the point I was sharing with you earlier. Across the district, we only have 15 teachers with three years of data on PBOSS. Blue data, dark blue means that they are growing students for more than one year. So if they have Mrs. Olson, she's literally getting them to learn a year and a half of information perhaps, not just a year. Blue, green is, you know, a lighter color. Green, getting one year. Yellow, a little less than a year's growth. And red, they're not growing that year. Middle school, you guys have the information in front of you. You've seen the numbers. The story is very similar. They have a big dark blue area. They have a light blue area. They're growing kids very well in the middle school. High school, again, this goes back to the issue that we talked about, we're not growing them as well. We hit a target, we're not growing them as well. But we, there are a lot of reasons for that. All just opinions right now as we continue to dig through the data. So I don't really want to share out opinions as to why those pieces are sort of the ones. SPP score, here's the historical high school number. You can see where we were trending a little south, then we kind of picked it up. Flatlined now. We're right now currently have our best scores in the last seven years or eight years during the high school time. A high school is outpacing the state in algebra, in biology and in literature. The scores are better than the average scores in your average high school. Middle school, okay, scores are kind of flat, straight across the board. A little dip this year. Collectively, they are white and flatlined even with the sixth grade state average on math. Seventh grade, they're ahead in math. In ELA, in sixth grade, they're ahead. In ELA, they're ahead. Eighth grade, they're even in math. They're ahead in science. They're ahead in ELA. And you can see the collective overall rating of the building right here. Blue represents the district, red represents the state. Intermediate center, going back to 15, the reason that starts in 15 versus 12 is that's when we began to integrate the building collectively, started moving grades up. So there won't be data from when all the buildings were disactive. And you can see, third grade, in third grade, math, ahead of the state. In third grade, ELA, ahead of the state. In fourth grade, behind the state in math, science and ELA. Fifth grade, I'm sorry, say that before. Fifth grade, even. Sixth grade, even. All grades, you can get the breakdown there. Okay, so at this time, I'll have Mr. Sports come up and talk to you about the high school report card and your three-year averages.
So the report card is encompassing academic, career-ready, social and emotional metrics. On the top of the academic, there's a range. There's some blue, a few things, a few numbers look larger, but when you look closer at it, for instance, ACT composite score, it has gone up, but our number that has taken it has gone down. So that's basically even, even though one's gone up. So that's why it's up. SAT's gone up. The PSAT, the kids for the SAT, we probably about two or three years ago really made a big push to get kids to take this. So they had some kind of roadmap on how to do better on the SAT. So you'll notice that in 2016, 17, we shot up to 274. And then we've held pretty steadily that over the last two years. This year, or this past year, we dropped down to 233. More kids took it those first two years. So I think that some of the stragglers that lasted 20 or 30, we didn't get. But the number, the scores have stayed about the same, right around 1,050 on average. So that's been good. It's also helped us with our SAT score at the end. That's gone up. Some of the other things in that, our high school attendance has always been a little bit of an issue. The number is not accurate and reflective in the future readiness index. Eighty-five, more than 85 percent of our students do attend school regularly. There were some issues that we got corrected this year with our tracking system and what was being coded as an absence and not. So we got that corrected. Hopefully next year, we see some vast improvement there. Then, Mr. McKnight said with the Keystone, the green right now is showing our first-time test takers and their scores as compared to the state. We're doing better, but we could always do more. So this year with the MTSS, we're hoping to be able to apply interventions to our first-time test takers who our teachers feel need a little bit of help to make them proficient, get them over the line. So with that, I'm hoping that those readers grow over the next year even more than they have so far since we might be here. The one area that we have a lot of work to do is the PBOSS growth. We're currently red. Two of the subjects, yellow or the other. So with MTSS, we're trying to get those Tier Two and Tier Three interventions and also the Tier One interventions locked in so the teachers have that toolbox to use in their classroom. Hopefully that is a number that we can vastly improve on because that will go a long way in our future readiness and making that look much more reflective of who we are. Going down to the career readiness, it's been a big push across the state. Right now, we have the word of the dip in the VCT enrollment for a variety of reasons. We're coming up with some other options for students to be able to set up their career opportunities after high school. So with that, we've also set up some more support to raise that. Yellow, 80 percent. So that's 80 percent of our students achieved an active skills certificate. We should probably look that to be up 95, almost to 100. We're setting the kids out there. We want them to be successful and get that certificate because ultimately, after they graduate, that certificate's going to lead them to the jobs in the career fields that they're choosing out there. Last year, the number of that kind of loads our internships. We only had three complete. This year, we're well above that. So our program is growing as it's been implemented. The career standards benchmark, you'll notice that on the future readiness index when you're in there. It's currently at 59.1. We have 94. That looks like a drastic drop. Really, that was a drastic drop due to lack of tracking on some of the artifacts that we had. And then ultimately ending at around 59.1. That is what Naviance is doing for us. Naviance is helping us track that. It's also giving kids a better variety of artifacts that they can complete that we can use for the career standards benchmarks across their four years. Social and emotional, last year, we had 1,679 discipline referrals for the building. That's almost double what we did in 1718. Only about 1,125 of the actual incidents. That's about 67 percent referrals to incident ratio. That's pretty much up on what it's been. However, the main thing there, that's not the discipline that you historically think of. That's not some kid got trouble. A large proportion of that is we've made a big push in 1718 and then 1819 to start tracking our attendance and our attendance issues. So a lot of those are attendance-related. Kids that have three extraneous lanes, they get a detention, that's an incident or referral. So that's why that number looks like it's jumped. We've put together some more protocols for tracking that closely, having, you know, the attendance secretary submit the referrals so the assistant principals can take care of the referral. The last metric that we have in there, the SAP referrals are about the same, a little bit higher than last year. The last number that we have is student event attendance. We started tracking that. And last year, we noticed that there was a dip in students attending events. So we're trying to, with Mr. Schmidt, work on some ways that we can hopefully improve our students coming out and showing support from their peers at events.
Is there a question for Mr. Sports?
Thank you, sir.
Couple of key points to note before I turn Mr. Rexford up. I want you to pull out and notice, one of the things, if we were to show you five years of data, okay, you'll see, to Mr. Sports' point about the PSAT enrollment, that was around 120 students before. And actually, he took that on as one of his goal initiatives and drove that number into the 270s, basically by old salesmanship knocking on the student stores, getting them to enroll and take that. The other issue, I know we touched on it briefly, well, you can see our dual enrollment credits, and where we've gone over three years there, we're at 367 from 136. Eighteen students went out, 69 students taking dual enrollment. The issue here on internships, we had three last year. We are crossing over 30 this year. So we've resourced that better. We have people dedicated to that effort now. This issue has now been resolved as a separate Naviance step back of the 90s. So those are some of the key points that I have to make. Mr. Rexford?
Yes, sir. Good evening. So as you may know, if you were at the board meeting where I presented that we were taking the initiative to move toward becoming a school to watch, one of the things that goes along with that is that we must develop our own mission and vision for the middle school. And in conjunction with the district mission and vision where we're focusing on growing diverse learners and learning together and advocating for all, that the middle school, we have developed the following. At Daniel Boone Area Middle School, we support the district mission and vision by ensuring our students are engaged, challenged and surrounded by kindness, positivity and care. So why I bring that up to you today is that we do have a focus at the middle school and we are growing our students. That is really important to us. As Mr. McKnight shared earlier, the one thing that the middle school is doing really well is growing our students. And we are doing that in all of our levels. So that's something that I'm really proud of. Even in math, if you take a look at our data on our report card on the screen, our students in reading, we are green, meaning that our students are, and in fact, I apologize, the first items are the achievement numbers. So in terms of achievement, we are green in language arts, meaning our students are achieving in that area. In math, we are red. That is an area where we are struggling as a building achievement-wise. However, if you look down to where it says PBOSS growth in math, that is where it shows if our students are making gains and growing. And as you can see, they are doing that. We're doing very well in that area. So in all three grade levels, our students are making improvements and are growing. And so that's something that I am proud of. We just have to keep working. So and obviously, by growing our students, that means that they are only going to achieve more. So I'm proud of that. And in seeing the work that Megan is doing at the intermediate center, I can see that they are coming to us and their scores are improving as they're coming to us, which hopefully then means that that number moves up for us too. Yes, sir?
We, um, they, before the students, I turned them to blue, yet they don't need to say average. They went down. I think so, it's ironic. I mean, it might just have seemed that it would go down, but.
So you're comparing the math where it says that they meet the goal target as compared to the math. So what that means is, is that, say I'm, we're taking a typical student who may not be doing well in the PSSA. They're getting a below basic on the PSSA for instance. So they may have had below basic the year before. And then when they're coming to us, they may still be scoring below basic or basic, but they are growing more than one year. So they're growing their knowledge in that time. However, their score still isn't that, the red there where it says all students who meet goal target, that means that they're scoring proficient or advanced. So any student who is scoring basic or below basic isn't included there. However, those students very well could be growing and making gains of a year or more, which is what the blue is showing, that they're making more than a year's worth of growth in that time. But they're still not scoring proficient. So what we're working on is how can we get them to now be scoring proficient? We're obviously moving them in the right direction, but how do we get them to where they need to be? And that's what's, what we're really focusing on now with that. But as I said, all of our students in all three grade levels are growing. Even our seventh grade, which is our lowest, they've moved from red to yellow. So we're moving in the right direction. It's just keeping it going and getting the scores up from where they are. And then our, you can see, our reading scores are green. The one thing that I will attribute that to, and one way that we have corrected that hopefully for this school year, sixth grade is where our language arts scores or the growth scores tend to be the lowest. So one thing that we did do was all of our sixth grade teachers starting this year are teaching only one subject area. So the people who are teaching the subject areas are teaching the subject area that they are most comfortable with and most knowledgeable in. So the teachers who are now teaching language arts only are teaching language arts, whereas last year and the years prior, they were teaching multiple subjects. They were teaching two or four or three subjects at one time. So now that they're focusing directly on those and we've been spending time, we were at the intermediate center, learning about TVAs and different things. So my teachers are definitely getting stronger in that content and are only focused on that one content. When we move down, the career ready score is obviously a score that is concerning when you look at that. At 41.1 percent, you can see the year prior, we were 94.9 percent. We actually had a long-term substitute in for our guidance counselor who handles that. And unfortunately, half of the students who had the course Family and Consumer Science in the first half of the year last school year, they had done all of the work that they needed to do, but the artifacts were never saved. So in order to get credit for that, their artifacts had to be saved. So that was an oversight, obviously, on my part because I didn't check in to make sure that she had saved those artifacts. And then when we went to gather them before the end of the school year last year, we discovered that we've only had the artifacts for the students in the spring, and we didn't have the artifacts for the students in the fall. So that's why it's forty-one percent, because we missed all of the students who took that course in the fall. So that will be remedied this year, so we should not have that problem any further going forward. And obviously, because I made the mistake also in not checking on that, that is something that is at the forefront of my mind, to make sure that we do have those artifacts and we are keeping those, so we can upload them and give credit for that. In terms of discipline referrals and discipline incidents, we did have a different assistant principal last year, so that was the first year with a new assistant principal that we had, and you can see our numbers the two years prior were pretty consistent. So I do think that we were much more diligent about what we were doing in terms of our discipline and making sure that students were following the things that we needed them to do, and we really also, as you know, have really gotten into our O V A S program, our anti-bullying program. So the one thing that we do know is that when we are doing that, the research says that your incidents are actually going to go up, because people are reporting things more often, because they are more aware of what that is. So I fully expect that this number will be a little bit less or kind of consistent this year. I'm hoping for a little bit less, but it also tells me, in looking at that, is that we are handling things that are going on in our building. So we are certainly not ignoring things that are happening or not reporting those things. So although it is a red, and that's not always a positive, I tend to try to look at that as the positive and say that at least we are handling those things that are going on in our building. And you can see our SAP referrals are pretty consistent, and our student activities participation is pretty consistent also. And one thing that I do want to note is that, starting this year, all of our students are participating in some type of activity, because we started clubs, and all of our students participate in clubs in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade during our eighth period time once a cycle. So these are formal clubs that exist either after school, or possibly during eighth period, but maybe after school, things like band or chorus. But in addition to that, we have made sure that every student on our building is involved in something that is enjoyable, and that we are trying to do something that makes school a little bit of fun at the end of their day once a cycle. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Schult, to simplify that point that we asked about, it would be as if the, and I'm not saying this is the case, but a simple example, is that the middle school in the sixth grade staff inherits a student who's in sixth grade but performing on a third grade level. They might grow them a year and a half, but they're still not going to be proficient. So that's where you're going to get that. Mr. Schult, intermediate center.
Hello, everybody. So this was a very interesting time for me. Many of you know that this past year was my first opportunity to move from the secondary environment down to the elementary building. So having been somebody who was not trained to be an elementary teacher, I had a lot of learning to do and a lot of figuring out. But the thing that I am so thankful for is that I was blessed with a great staff who had been through some administrative changes over time, and were really interested in doing what's best for kids. Every time we're making a decision, every time we're considering what our options are, we always go back to what's best for kids and what do we need to be doing for them. So a lot of change has happened. In many instances, last year, it was just, every day, we're teaching math and we're teaching our English language arts. I know that sounds oversimpl, but we need to make sure that something else isn't overcoming what we need to do in the basics. We also teach science and social studies at this level. For the first time, it's identified in that way. I'll try to make it so I can speak better. Getting a little far in there, guys. So, in this way, looking at it, last year was the first year that we had all of the district's third, fourth, and fifth graders, so we obviously increased. Oops, I'm a primary. Thanks, Melanie. I'm like, see, my thoughts little, because in sixteen and seventeen and seventeen and eighteen, we had to take into account the fact that the buildings were separate. So I had to consider, when I'm looking at the past two years, it wasn't exactly the same. Overall, though, looking at this past year and our success of having everybody under one roof, we were pleased to see that for third and fifth, they really were able to grow and make big changes for themselves. Again, there's still lots of room to grow and lots of things to figure out. Our fourth grade is an area of growth. One of the things that we've done this year, that Mrs. Rexford mentioned, was when we were sent to the I U as administrators for training on text-dependent analysis, so that is a very big chunk of our students. At this point in time, sitting down and reading a story is not enough. You have to be able to comprehend it and then communicate and write the answers about what it needs, and really raise yourself up to a high level where our students aren't necessarily comfortable, and sometimes even our teachers weren't comfortable with it. By bringing additional training on what informational texts they need to be reviewing, that has really helped our teachers this year also continue to make gains. Math, again, in the same manner, we did a lot of change. My third grade teachers were super proud. It is the baseline for our students in the first time they take a test. So I've told our fourth and fifth graders, guess what? The bar's been set high. You need to make sure you're maintaining this. We've got a great group of third graders. This is the first year that all of the second graders have come to us directly from Mrs. Hefter and her teachers, so they have the same experience. There can no longer be this side of the river and that side of the river. We are finally our one boom. Everybody's having the same experience, and thus, we need to make sure that we're meeting all of the kids where they are, and providing, looking forward to the M T S S and the tiers that we need as well. But again, I, the thing that I am the absolute most proud of is, not exactly where we were, and we got growth to do, we have lots of growth opportunities, but when we look down here to what our growth is, so are we growing kids? It doesn't matter where they fell along the course of time and where their ability is. Didn't we get more out of them than even the state expected? Growth in math, a hundred percent of our kids, special ed, regular ed, the people who are on the cusp, our emotional support, all of them grew. So that was huge for our staff to see, that, oh my gosh, they really took on the fact that we are going back to the basics and worked with those students. Reading, we made some changes this year to help improve that as well. As I mentioned, the T D As are a big part of it. It's not just reading, it's also being able to write and communicate. So we added some additional time designated this year for grammar and writing, so that our students are getting even more in their day to help them not only read, but to understand and get that practice. Science, Mr. McKnight pointed out about the fact that we figured out in analyzing and doing the mapping this year, our science, we've missed three main topics. Thankfully, we've been able to do as well as we have given that, but this year and in the coming years, I expect to see a huge increase, because we will be making sure that those standards are covered prior to fourth grade, and then they will be also better prepared by the time they get to the middle school, because we will be aligned in the appropriate manner. Our counselors last year did a great job in the career ready score. Again, ninety-six point seven, they really made sure that even if a student was absent, that they were able to go back, or a lesson was missed, that they were able to go back and meet with those students to gather their artifacts. And last year, as we joined all the buildings together, obviously, our population grew. I very much appreciated having Mr. Curtis Fleming, and I know Melanie is enjoying those benefits as well this year, of having a designated person to help me and the students and the teachers combat those behavioral concerns that come up. As we put six hundred and twenty-six students in one building, everybody getting together and learning and having a tighter space, we really had to work on what's appropriate behavior and make sure we were able to address every concern in a timely fashion. That in of itself at this age level, and at all age levels, particularly at third, fourth, and fifth, they need to know what they did wrong and what better choice to make in the future, so that we can continue to move forward and teach them how to be better students and better friends and caring of one another. That's one of the best parts about being in the elementary world, is having that opportunity to have such an impact on them and their families for the long term, be able to intervene earlier. Our SAP referrals, that is an area where, at this level, identifying who gets identified and what we deal with in guidance versus attrival student assistance. And then we have continued, our extracurriculars are banned in chorus. This current fourth grade enrollment, they're just not as interested in chorus and banned. Last year's, they were very much. So we're just following them through, and we have a great program, and the kids do a great job. So it's been a great year, I'm looking forward to this year and then many years ahead. Do you guys have any questions for me? I love three, four, five. It's great. I mean, I love a lot, unusually, but at the same time, it's nice to be a little guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It has been not least our use of this effort for the country.
All right. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present this to you, and I'd like to start by showing you the grid at the bottom, the key, so that you know what we're talking about. We only talk about the scores. So at the bottom, if you see the key, the math benchmark for students on benchmark is eighty-six to one hundred percent that they would score on their tests. Approaching benchmark is seventy to eighty-five percent. Anybody falling below that would be below benchmark. Reading benchmark for kindergarten is level C and above. First grade is J and above, and second grade is M and above. And off to the side, you'll see reading approaching is kindergarten level C, first grade H or I, and second grade level L. So that'll kind of give you some background as we talk about the reading and math. So to start with enrollment, you'll see the trend from sixteen to, sixteen, seventeen to eighteen, nineteen, did increase a hundred and seventy-two students due to the realignment. The enrollment report for December, this December, is six hundred and fourteen students. Our goal in going through all of this information is continuous improvement and ongoing progress for all of our kids. So what I did with the percentages, if you take a look for math kindergarten, we listed the zero to ten number recognition, which is really important in kindergarten, and also their end-of-the-year test. And I listed them by two percentages, like I said at the bottom. So if you were looking at the end-of-the-year test for kindergarten, fifty-eight percent of the students in the regular met the benchmark in sixteen, seventeen, six to seven, and seventeen, eighteen, and fifty-two. I can use this to show you. And then what, how many students were approaching. So what we like to do is add these two numbers together, so that you can identify which students are at the intensive level below that. So for, if you look at progress, for students in sixteen, seventeen, we look at fifty-eight percent were on benchmark, thirty-one percent were approaching. If you move those same students, because we like to look at growth, if you move those same students, now they're first graders, at their end-of-the-year test, now we have sixty-nine percent on grade level, twenty-six percent approaching. And then if they move on to second grade, we have seventy-five percent of our kids on that benchmark assessment, and then twenty-one percent approaching. When looking at reading, when we're looking on our F A S and P A S scores, same thing. You're looking at how many students met the benchmark, how many students were approaching in kindergarten. And then if you look at those same students, you're coming down here to their first grade scores, seventy-six percent at level, ten percent approaching. And then move that down here to second grade, those same students are now at eighty-one percent with eight percent approaching. So the goal is always moving our kids and helping them make progress. The DIBIL scores are another very important scale that we measure in kindergarten, first and second grade. It's a little bit harder to look at those scores and compare them year to year, because they're different assessments per grade level. So in kindergarten, you're looking at different scales that are being assessed than what you're looking at at the second grade level. So it's harder to look at the scores, because they're getting the composite score based on the assessments that they're given with that DIBIL assessment. Any questions in relation to the math?
I do have one question. The second grade benchmark, seventy-five percent, it's red. It checked out, I mean, it passed here, it was sixty-two percent, sixty-seven percent, and it's not red. Does the benchmark change?
Well, if you're being serious, you can color any of those things if you left them alone. However, one of the big numbers that you'll hear in education is where are students as they enter third grade? If they're not on level within third grade, there's a lot of statistical information that goes along with the dangers that follow, all the things that are going on, they don't finish well. So that's why it's red. It's not our teachers. This isn't a teacher's book, right? This is about learning students. So our teachers are really growing kids and doing probably good, but we have to figure out, what are we doing to kind of give this other twenty-five percent of the remaining to do? How we make that happen.
Okay. But you need to, if you're tuning it right above that, it's forty-seven percent on F A S.
That's a two-minute addition test that the students are doing, so in relation to that, if students can complete forty to eighty per minute, they are considered benchmark. In two minutes, I'm sorry, in two minutes. Twenty to thirty-nine, they'd be approaching, and less than nineteen, intensive.
I think the silver, we're supposed to be a base in red, you go down to the bottom and then it's seventy-five, suppose it's twenty-six? Is that what it is?
Eighty-six to one hundred percent.
And the color code is just for reference, to keep us in line with the state color coding system, so all kind of looking at it from the same perspective.
And overall, we want all of these scores to increase. That's our goal, so we want to increase, grow our kids. Any other questions with the DIBILs, F and P, math? The next level is our B R G A N S assessment, that's the assessment we deliver to all incoming kindergartners, and I think I went through this on a, we did an update on the kindergarten program, but the B R G A N S assessment, this is the assessment out of a hundred percent, the students are scoring in this range, above level, on level, below level, severely below level, we can see how many students soar in sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and fifteen, eighteen. Social, emotional metric, a few of the things we wanted to point out, the teachers in the parks program, not having the sixteen, seventeen school year, we had thirty-nine students out of that amount of students that were eighteen, that were Title I students that were included in our program. And then last year, this past summer, we had sixty students, twenty-seven of them were Title I students. One of the things I want to point out with the discipline, as you can see, huge, huge increase, seven hundred out of that one thousand eighty-two were elopement and defiant behavior. So we were not, although we were addressing those, like Jenny said, we were always addressing those issues, it's more of the teacher handling those situations, or by itself, or myself, but not necessarily entering into the system. And that was the year we added our second guidance counselor, and that was a big push to get, make sure we're documenting all of those behavior issues in the system. And then the last part, the SAP referrals, forty-one in seventeen, eighteen, and fifty-three referrals in eighteen, nineteen. Any questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So some of the numbers that we looked at in terms of red, what we want to do is, for example, if we go back to the issue of a thousand eighty students having a discipline issue in the primary setting, how do we become proactive? Right now, we're reactive, because things are happening. What kind of modeling, what kind of programs can we put in place that are proactive so that those numbers go down? So when you see those red things, although people see red and think alarm, it really is just, think attention. Attention to this issue, what programming and what design are we going to put in play for the reds and yellows, to make sure that we're proactive? And that's much, if you go all the way back to the beginning of the report, look at the executive summary, look at the pieces of tier one, how to put that program in place. If you do that well, and we resource the staff and train it well, those numbers should begin to reduce where they're red, and move towards yellow, and yellows should move towards green, and greens should move towards blue. That really is what we're trying to do.
I just, I think the reds in those areas are good, for the children accountable. So I mean, but communicating to these, it's not accepted with the April, what these are made, I think there are times where it's murder them, not, just trying to drive that number, make it lower, the numbers still are low, right? Which is a result.
When we look at that, sure, when we look at that M T S S model, that we're growing towards, and we put it into tier, it splits academically and behaviorally, how do we get students to understand, what are the expectations of behavior? So Melanie has school-wide positive behavior model that she is growing and beginning to earn state recognition for. We expect as that model comes online, as Jenny's model comes online, am I going to mess it up, Jenny, schools to watch?
The doc.
Schools to watch. You know, as we bring, as the high school continues to, you know, push into those areas, that they have respect for. Those are the things we expect to continue to yield results. So, but it doesn't happen overnight, it takes some time.
Can I ask, so, is there any data, shows like, is the new kids are coming in, or is the older kids are having any pressures?
We have quite a few behaviors just collectively. So, you want to disaggregate our transient move-ins, is that what you're asking? Where's the students who inherit it?
Kindergarten, like, is it, are new kids coming to school, so like, for the first time they're in education?
Yeah, I understand. The question, what she's asking is, how many of your breakdowns are students who are coming into kindergarten versus your 1st and 2nd grade students?
I would say I have to look back at the data, but I would say it's, coming into school, there's a lot of expectations that comes up, so sitting in, like, sitting in your space. I would say that there are some future issues there in kindergarten. I would be able to say with that looking at the data, is it different in 1st or 2nd, as far as the spread?
Would you like that for a break? I can get that for you.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it actually decreased as the time went on.
I'll get it for you.
Kids are making progress. So, when they come to kindergarten, we teach them the A-level behavior matrix, where we teach them its expected behaviors and where those behaviors are expected, and what is, what is good behavior laying in the cafeteria. So, once they learn those skills, they do make progress from there, and then they'll work the system of what our expectations are, we deliver consequences, that will be good for them. So, yes, I would say that kids coming into kindergarten, by the time they're in 1st and 2nd grade, we are making progress towards a positive behavior.
Any other questions, please?
No.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Alright, so, thank you, Mr. McKnight, and the building administrators for coming in and sharing your insights. So, we have any public comment on that right now? Okay. Next item, number 7, finance. We have like, 6 items, any discussion on any of the items under finance? I could go through them one at a time and read it, but I don't, I don't want to, so. I do want to thank the unanimous donor for $750 toward the Coral Reef Project. And that was all I wanted to say about that. So, we'll move on to finance. This is motion for the, you know, presenting the real estate millage that we, that we need to present for, per Act 1 to PDE. And that, so that, this will be the maximum number that we would be presenting, not what we will definitely be doing in July.
It's really our option building.
Right. I just want to make that clear. Any, any discussion on that currently? No, okay. What's that?
Public comment?
Yeah, and then, I just want to make sure. So, is there any public comment on finance issues? Okay, seeing none. Presentation by board members, secretary correspondence? Is there any secretaries correspondence, Mr. Scott?
Yes, there is. We, we the board received an email several weeks ago from a former board member, Rich Martino. So, I just want to kind of give you a quick oversight of what he wrote to us. The board received an email from resident Rich Martino of Welsh Drive in Douglasville on December 18, 2019. He wanted to remind the board that one of the board's primary responsibilities is to safeguard and spend the money of the district taxpayers. He states that sound business practices require our revenue to be or exceed our extra expenditures to them, and that many school districts make a budget shortfall by simply imposing higher taxes. He is concerned that the multiple labor contracts signed with the staff in the last year will put an undue strain on our budget in the long term. In addition, Mr. Martino said stress that he would like us, the board, to consider reading out his email and future emails in total. I would assume he's referring to his previous request made in person at a December 2018 meeting, that he, that we can read and correspond his freedom again, as opposed to summarizing it for the record.
Yeah, I thought they chose to summarize it for the record, and not read out everybody's, you know, work footwork.
Yeah, and I-
It could take all afternoon.
And I did want to open that up, that, that, his, his other comments, taken, well-taken about the budget. But, this is, this is the second or third time that he's sent us an email. This particular resident sent us an email and asked us to reconsider the previous board's decision to just give a summary. So, I did want to open it up to see if anybody felt that we needed to reconsider just doing a summary, or if we can just leave it the way it is. We don't need to vote on it unless we want to change the policy, but I wanted to hear what everybody's thoughts were.
I think it's too easy for somebody, for, speaking of Mr. Martino.
Correct.
I think his information is good. I don't always find it exactly for anybody's information when they step up to the podium. We probably have some conversation about, you know, what we know versus what we think, what somebody might think, you know, about his opinion.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Spend our entire time, if they don't want to come to a board meeting and take the agreement, I don't think that it's-
I think the current policy, stated how we achieve course on, put it out on the web, if you want to, to read it. We, I read that. I didn't even read the end.
I noticed that you told us to read it in a meeting, and we say-
You know, I don't want to pick on this particular email, you know, ad infinitum, but, you know, it is, the, that email took Mr. Scott 49 seconds to read it, and the email, his summary, and the email was four times as long. So, I'm, and, you know, I, if, if someone comes down here and makes, makes the time to come to the meeting, and they've got their 3 minutes, and-
Yeah, we have.
Right, I have, you can say what you want.
Summarize it, we'll get the piece out when we open this subject.
I just wanted to make sure that no one, you know, I didn't want to make that decision unilaterally, I just wanted to make sure if no one is making a motion to change our rules, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, we can leave it the way they are. We agreed?
Yes.
I agree.
And we always welcome that.
Oh, excellent, that's fine, yeah. And, and, I mean, it's not like the, the comments that he made are any secret to anybody, but, and it's fine to, for him, for them to be reiterated. I just wanted to be sure that making a summary was still okay with everybody. Alright. Intermediate unit board report, did they meet since last time?
No, they did not. No, the meeting is on Thursday, I had an orientation today.
Okay.
So, it's the 3rd Thursday of every month, so I have a report.
Alright, okay. Career and Technology, did they, did someone attend that meeting? It's the Career and Technology? I don't know who, who is the representative for that. You think they meet next week? Okay. So, they don't, they haven't met in January, they haven't met in January yet? Student Government Report, waiting also patiently, thank you so much.
Good evening, I would like to thank Dr. Cooper and the school board for allowing me to speak tonight. I, as well as our vice president, Ryan Cooper, who is also here. I think it is safe to say that student government, as well as the rest of the high school, has had a, has had a very productive first half of the year. Student government began the year by organizing and running a homecoming week. Our spirit week came with lots of participations from students and staff. We took the Battle of the Classes in a different direction this year by holding a dodgeball tournament, which brought in a lot of participants and spectators. And if you were at the bonfire, you, as well as many members of the community, would know just how well it burned, thanks to our student builders. And we kicked off homecoming weekend with our pep rally, showcasing our fall sports teams in marching band, introducing the homecoming court, and closing out the Battle of the Classes tournament. Aside from homecoming, all of our committees within student government have been hard at work to do their own things. They've held meetings with Mr. Price in regards to food services, and Mrs. Hellison to discuss upcoming food drives. And our finance committee held a t-shirt fundraiser, which helped increase funds to go towards future projects. In the spring, we will be organizing scholarships to be awarded to outstanding, to outstanding students and beginning a campaign for next year's offices. Outside of student government, something that I believe is worthy of mentioning is the success of the December Blood Ride. After an outstanding assembly, there was a total of 250 units of lifesaving blood products. With the success we have had within the first 2 quarters, and with the fantastic job Mr. Spores and the high school administration is doing, I believe we are on the path to enhancing experiences for students at junior year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our student board representative is ill today, is not here. Legislative report, do we have anything for this?
No, my first meeting is in February.
Is in February, okay. Any other board reports? Okay, moving on to Personnel, number 10. Any concerns there? Any public comment? Enrollment numbers, number 11, and we received those, I guess, last week for the end of the year. Curriculum instruction, there, I don't believe there's been a meeting since the last time we met, is that correct? Next meeting is?
27th.
27th, okay. Extracurricular, hasn't had a meeting since?
Yep, next meeting is February 15th.
Alright. Facilities and Transportation, before we receive Mr. Strobel's report on today's meeting, due to a scheduling issue on our part, we have a presentation by a student group that is here to, that was to come to facilities. But we, you guys couldn't vote anything out of committee anyway, so, if it'd be okay, I'd like him to come up and give his presentation to us. Is that okay? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know if you were going to play rock, paper, scissors to decide who was coming up. Whichever one. You both, both come up? You bet. And I might ask that, is your, is that microphone on? Okay. I will, before you leave, I will give you my, my, my email, and you can send a copy of it to me and Mr. Strobel, and I'll, I'll give you that information. But then, you can show it to us, yeah, that's great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Sorely, and I'm a senior at our school.
And I was, I was listening.
I'm the president and he's the vice president of Club Cafe, which recently got approved last year. And Club Cafe is dedicated to creating a cultural awareness, a positive culturally aware environment for everyone at our school. And we have been working alongside them, the place we're implementing for the past couple months. And we've seen a whole change from us, trying to create different fun, positive activities. And we're also trying to create a partnership with the kids that we're working with. And we also have talks with our kids about any type of racial issues they have. And we also just try to be very positive, love the students in our school. We're here for you today because our big project that we have for this year is that we want to get a mural approved. We would like to paint a cultural awareness wall in the front, to the right of the cafeteria. If you're looking straight at the cafeteria, there's this big blank wall in the hallway, and we would like to paint a mural there that not only showcases what cafe is about, but also is a very positive role model for our environment at school. And then, I'll walk around and show you. And we've also been working alongside our teacher here, Mrs. Schreiner. And she has set up everything that we would need to create this mural. She's got rubber supplies, and she's helped us measure the wall and everything. It's been a cool experience. As you can see, it's- So, it looks kind of simple, but it's plain, and it's kind of straight to the point. And there's the big 4 positive quotes that are here. And the hands, they're different colors because they show unity and how all the hands are conjoined. And everything, like, the handwork would all be done with pencils, so there's no room for error. And everything is just simple, but it's nice. And then, since the wall that we're using is so made through, always human interaction, or, you know, the, the, the- That's who you're going to email that to? Okay. I'm just asking, let you go. So, our big end goal is to be able to create, to showcase this wall of all kinds of cultural differences and everything. But our first big project for that wall is just getting these hands down and everything, and putting it right in the middle of it, and having our inspirational quotes for students to walk by, especially since it's a really busy hallway. And even if you're just glancing really quickly, you're going to see a quick quote by Gandhi or Martin Luther King, and you're going to think, wow. And a lot of kids here, they say, oh, we're not doing anything, or any racial problems. There's, you know, we're not being heard, we're not, we don't get to talk, or we don't get to do anything, or they're not trying. But if they see something on the wall where it's students trying to help students, they're going to think, wow, I can do anything. Or just being like, oh, wow, I can do a mural. Like, a lot of kids, when I told them that we were going to be doing a mural on the wall, they're like, you can do that? It was, it's a really good thing, and I think it's something really positive thing, and especially since it's on the wall. And I know for me, since I'm a senior, I'll be leaving, but I'll be, a lot of younger siblings, and knowing that those little kids are going to come up through years and see this in the high school, hopefully in the future, is really, really reassuring, and it's really a good thing.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I, if no, no one objects, I gave, I gave them our emails, and I can, we can make sure that if you need to have a copy of it when we vote next, in 2 weeks, attached to the agenda, you'll have it. So, I see no problem to put it on to vote for next, next month? Next, 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 in 2 weeks? In 2 weeks. So, we'll, we will, we will vote on it in 2 weeks, and so, we'll make sure to get back to you. So, I know that, you know, your time with Mrs. Schreiner is, is short, because she's leaving. She's leaving when you guys leave. And so, so we'll make sure to get, get your answer to you as soon as possible. Thank you so much for coming in, and waiting, thank you. What's that?
Do you mind if I elaborate a little more?
Oh, of course.
One of our primary goals as like, also for cafes, is to educate people, like, not only just on, I guess, like, it's like how, like, I guess, like, the different varieties of like, culture, like, are like positive in our school. It's also to educate people on like, how to deal with the situations, and maybe even like, have like, a more open perspective. Because I feel like, like, if people learn about the differences, rather than like, what similarities are there, they will actually be able to learn to accept them, rather than just, like, almost say so much of that. If you think about it, one of the things that was an issue in a lot of cultures, like, for example, the Nazis, they taught the similarities, and that is what caused an issue. If we teach the differences, and we teach, we learn to accept those, that will actually cause like, the opposite effect, and will cause like, more enlightenment of students. And our goal is to end racism and sexism. So, by people of all backgrounds, no matter what, we want them to learn, if, if, in fact, if somebody is racist or sexist, we want them to join the club. We're in a very open club, we're very accepting to everyone. So, I feel like that is very a couple of special.
And also, like, we've had a couple of students that were repeat offenders for like, racial, like, slurs and stuff, that have joined the club, that I've like, talked to. Oh, like, like, there are certain kids that, I've said like, word to me, and I was like, hey, join this club, what do you mean? Just come, see what it's about, you know? And after like, sitting there and hearing the, like, what that word means, I don't use it anymore. And these are the same kids that were once calling kids the M word in the hallway, or saying racial slurs, that are now about to be helping us paint this mural to create cultural awareness. And I think it can have a really big impact.
Thank you both.
If I could say something, I want to applaud your efforts, I think this is awesome. It falls directly in line with what our vision is, that the board improved that spring, and learning together, advocating for all, fits right in line with our core beliefs and shared values are of acceptance and respect, and also with a profile-
and shared values are, of acceptance and respect, and also with a profile of a graduate, the R and the A is, is advocating, by the advocating for itself and others. So I want to applaud your efforts. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hey, you want, are you looking forward to following that with your, the rest of the boring stuff that happened in fin-, in, in facilities?
There's a lot to go over, so I want to go over the rest of the, what we do.
I know.
The high school paving update, um, there's an engineering bid that needs to be, um, for, for lawyer, um, to do the, uh, the R date, it's $95,000, so we need to, um, be able to approve that so that we can control. Also, um, there's a corporate project that I just want to bring up. Um, you know, you get something for free, and it's like, bust this money, um, it didn't happen, but it was fully, I believe, that they, they actually found the money, a bunch of grants available, um, but it goes away, so they're going to vote this quickly, or they'll lose the money. There was $11,000 for a vinyl fence because it had the structure of the area, which, which were, it's a little bit of a crime, it was stolen, um, donated, and, um, and two key boxes, so a total of $11,000, it's a $75,000 grant, it's going to go away, you know, go away quickly, and then, um, they actually covered the other part, um, so, again, really, something that they donated, and then had to go back to the well, um, so, um, that would be something that we'd like to get approved as soon as possible, so that they don't lose it. Um, then the last, there was, um, there's, um, twenty-plus-year-old items in the back of your kitchen, let me take it out, let me take them, bid, um, it's a $2,000 a year for new equipment. If they can add a condition to it, um, how we can actually go from, um, to, um, be able to, I suppose, there's some things that we'd like to bring to the table in regards to, um, our, our, our city.
Um, can I ask, is there one more thing about baseball field?
Um, baseball field. Um, yeah.
It might not have been, it might not have been about money, but.
It's not about, yeah, there was, um, there were some issues with the baseball field over the, um, not the, um, there was a lot of repair work done, and it was repairing to swell, which concerns the weather harness to be ready, so, if there is a field here that's ready, um, it's in good condition, but it would need a fence and be explored and worked. So, as a plan B, um, they're going to be ready to install a temporary fence and a rented square work, but it may indeed be, um, they're still to see if they can get the field in condition if it remains.
Oh, I see.
So they're determining, like, to down, to, or, you got it, I'm sorry.
Um, the other work, um, again, it's still a bench repair and yellow cap, um, but it's still not put down.
And I, I have to put a question, for, for them to play here instead of having to play along with us?
That's, that's, you know, it's a high school field here.
Okay, so there's fence for?
There's, there's a temporary fence they'd like to put up.
Okay.
If, if needed, the office is not going to work, there's going to be temporary fence and temporary square work. So that would be an expense, I mean, the expenses can bring up to us, but it's something that was, I mean, you want to go to the rest of the block a lot.
No, 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 that was.
There is just that, and, 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 and.
He said the field's ready, the everything has to be done, so it's, it's.
So there might be, um, some items added to the voting meeting, possibly? If, if it needs to happen urgently?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure where we were.
It's a time, it's time sensitive.
Yeah.
One thing, curious, the type of fence is, because, just, some of the time, I think, I've had before, the girls are trying to put a fence in.
He did not elaborate on, um, trying to see what are any fence, or, you know.
Do something improved after the rest.
Certainly, certainly, no, it's not going to be a fence, it's going to be a long-term option, it's going to be something.
Correct.
Something, you know.
Well, I'm just curious, maybe it's more of a, because that's what girls are planning, but it's sad, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, he didn't, there wasn't something for, he means for your activities.
It's a deal about.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
And one other item I do want to bring up.
Oh, you made it sound like you were done. Go ahead.
Interstates, my meeting is rolling out right now.
Oh, okay.
So, we went through a bunch of stuff, um, it's just being prepared.
Did I hear a, um, a, a deadline for marked improvement of 30 days? From the beginning of the year, or, from, from the beginning of the year, or was there?
It was a date. Really, not the end of the month?
The end of the month.
The end of this month?
The end of the month, yeah, end of the month.
Okay. All right.
So it's not a group, a, a, a lot of effort made, just.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Struble. Um, for Finance Committee, the, um, uh, Mr. Miller, I, I hear rumors that there is a budget workshop tomorrow?
There is a budget workshop scheduled for tomorrow.
All right. And if you, if you know you're on the Finance Committee, you should probably show up.
If you're available, you should probably show up.
I'll, I'll be here. I know that that's a big draw. Um, Policy Review was, just, just happened. Um, and, uh, Mr. Scott, you have some stuff you talked about?
Sure. We, uh, we went through, uh, several, uh, new policies, actually, rather quickly, uh, between, uh, facility meetings, so, we went over our policy, uh, seven, this is all new business, uh, seven oh two, crowdfunding, uh, policy seven oh nine, building security, seven ten, we did, uh, uses, uh, facilities by staff, we hit, uh, policy seven one four, which is, uh, memorials, uh, policy seven one six was integrated pest management. Uh, policy seven one seven was cellular telephones, and then, uh, policy eight oh five, which is emergency, preparedness, and response. Those were all first readings tonight. Um, and Rob, I think that's great, that's, I'm going to check up there.
It'll be our first reading for the next calendar.
Yeah. So our next meeting, it looks like, it's going to be February 10. So, great?
I'll be there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Um, Technology Committee, I don't believe, is medicine's last one we were here. Um, Mr. Struble, next meeting is?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, 27th. What time is it? Is 5:30 or something ridiculous, something?
I don't know, somebody.
It is, I can tell you.
Yes.
All right.
I think, I think, I think, it's 5:30, that's.
All right.
Technology, uh, 5:30, it should be 5:30.
Okay.
5:30, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Struble. Um, I have not been asking for public comment, because I'm a terrible person, um, so is there public comment on any of the committee meeting topics that we just had? Let's just do that out of order. Sorry about that. Seeing none. Okay, old business, um, is to, um, for the, for the, um, so for the minutes of the December[1733.32]